Oh, no.
[laughing]
Just like that.
Good evening and welcome to the Gulf Breeze City Council regular meeting, uh, Monday, March seventeenth at five thirty. Blessed and pleased, Paul Rolles.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Slater.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Torrisson.
Here.
Mayor Fortum now.
Here.
And Mayor Fitch.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the end of the question. Blessed those present, oh Lord, that the business conducted here this evening will be for the continued betterment of our city, and in keeping with thy commandments, we ask in God's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the God who has created us. All right, now we'll open this, uh, meeting with our statement, uh, pursuant to executive order number twenty dash sixty-nine issued by the Office of Governor Ron DeSantis on March twentieth, twenty twenty, as extended by executive order twenty dash one seventy-nine, municipalities may conduct meetings of their government boards without having a forum of its members present physically or at any specific location. Instead municipalities may use communications media technologies such as telephoning or video conferencing as provided by Florida statutes where members of the council appearing remotely have the public participation. While a forum of council members is physically present for this meeting along with a minimal number of key staff, we are following the governor's emergency orders and the city's amendments to declarations regarding COVID- nineteen. I'd like now to ask the city attorney to explain the procedures for public comment and for participation in this meeting.
Thank you, mayor. On April sixth, twenty twenty, the city council adopted these procedures for using communications media technology as provided by section one twenty point fifty-four, paragraph five, B two, Florida statutes. This meeting is being streamed on YouTube Live and on the city's Facebook page. The agenda and backup material in the agenda packet are posted on the city's website. Members of the public wanting to participate in the meeting, and this, uh, these procedures apply both to the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting that will take place, um, in the course of this meeting tonight, and the regular city council meeting. Members wanting to participate were asked in the posted meeting notice to submit their questions or comments on agenda items with their name and address and a reference to the agenda item on which they wish, wish to comment. By email to thecityclerk@cityclerks@gulfbreezeflorida.com or by regular mail to the city clerk's attention at the City of Gulf Breeze, City Hall, ten seventy Shoreline Drive, Gulf Breeze, Florida, three two five six one. All written comments for this meeting had to be received by three P M. Central Standard Time today, August seventeen, twenty twenty. Anyone who wants to comment on an agenda item during the meeting, or anyone who wants to participate in the public forum at the end of the meeting can call into the following toll-free number, one eight 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 five eight five nine zero zero eight, call code one eight six three one nine nine five five. Hold and your call will be answered in turn. Comments on agenda items and in the public forum may also be made via the chat box on YouTube Live. The standard meeting rules continue to apply. Comments are limited to three minutes and must be applicable to the agenda item being considered or made during the public forum.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll, uh, move on for a couple of our minutes from our August third regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments or from the public? Comments or questions, Leslie?
Uh, none.
Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
So move approval.
Okay, we have several. We have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
I'll withdraw if you're...
I'm the rookie. Tom's there.
Okay, so Tom is getting in for it. Is that what you mean?
That's right.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from, uh, council? Hearing none. Our favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. At this time, we'll suspend the city council meeting to convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency Board to record. And on our, um, we, first thing we need to do is approve our July sixth CRA meeting minutes. Do we have any comments or questions regarding that? Okay, uh, council, do we have a motion?
Move to approve, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions? All right, hearing none. Our favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Passes five zero. We'll move on to CRA action items, and that is the Highway ninety-eight multimodal, multimodal overpasses state road three ninety-nine interchange redesign concept review. Samantha?
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, before I do introductions and, uh, turn it over to, uh, our consultant engineers, I'd like to just give a brief refresher on how it is that we got to where we are, uh, today, where you'll be considering for the first time, uh, a traffic analysis and an initial concept, uh, that, uh, if it is something you would like for us to continue to explore, then we in turn will, uh, begin to collaborate with FDOT as they embark on their own independent study of the redesign of three ninety-nine, as well as, uh, potentially, uh, move forward with the two multi-use overpasses, uh, that are within your presentation materials. But just a, a memory refresher, uh, for those who may be listening, uh, at home, of course, an effort such as this does not, uh, does not happen overnight. Uh, back in two thousand and ten, the, uh, city had a very, uh, large public engagement effort, of which redesign of, of three ninety-nine was a component of that most livable city master plan. One of the items that you heard from, uh, your citizens over and over again was the desire for connectivity, uh, from a multi-use path from Pensacola to the national seashore and east. And so as it is today, the three ninety-nine overpass is a pinch point and it bifurcates that those bike lanes, uh, that is something that you continue to hear. You've expressed to me, you know, your citizens would like to feel linked to their larger community, and right now there's really no way to get from here to there as it stands today. And so that is within your multi-use, I'm sorry, within your, um, most livable city master plan. And then also, there was the desire for, uh, a redesigned, um, three ninety-nine. Uh, it was, there were several alternatives put forward. One was a flyover, of which concept will be discussed tonight. In addition to the flyover there, it was, uh, consideration of a, uh, traffic intersection. I'm sure that'll be one of the, uh, the ways that our conversation will go this evening is, you know, was a, uh, traffic, a traditional signalized intersection, you know, considered? What are the pros and cons of that? But the reason for a T-intersection, uh, or, you know, a, a redesign from the current, uh, you know, kind of outdated design is because it takes a lot of land. And so, uh, your discussions this evening, we'll talk about, there's more than one alternative, but the council, uh, for a number of years, has talked with your citizens about the need to make sure that we're linked, uh, with our multi-use path to the east and west, uh, that we are helping our citizens, uh, get from the north side of the city to the south, which the overpasses do, but also that we're freeing up land. And the existing overpass does not do that, and it's imperative that for Andrews and Baptist and for Zigs Act River, those, um, those cluster industries that attract other like industries to this area and ensure those, those high wage jobs are here, it's very important that they be able to stay and grow in place. So those are considerations in addition to just the functionality of making sure that people are getting on and, and off the beach in as efficient, uh, a manner as possible. And so the, um, the concept that you'll be looking at this evening, the RFP looked at all three of those concepts. Um, this, uh, the, the need to, um, study three ninety-nine, uh, is within the long-range transportation plan, and the mayor and council, uh, the prior mayor and council in twenty sixteen, uh, approved a resolution to FDOT asking that they undergo a study. And so for four years at the TPO level, we've been talking with FDOT and asking them, you know, we really need to move forward with something because of course, you know, Pensacola is, we realize with a widened bridge, you're increasing the potential for capacity, and we still have a pinch point. Uh, what changed was about a year ago, uh, Mayor Fitch sat with, um, the district planner, who is now the district secretary, uh, for District Five, Jared Perdue, and talked about the city, uh, city's vision and your master plan for multimobility. And we just asked, we're, we're, uh, focused on resiliency, uh, the mayor and council want to underground utilities, but if, if FDOT is going to be looking at widening the highway through Gulf Breeze, then that could certainly affect those plans. And the feedback Mayor Fitch got from FDOT is that they understand that that is extremely unlikely because we're a built-out environment with large commercial buildings close to the highway. And in fact, FDOT said that they thought we were right on track with focusing on multimobility and maybe some creative out-of-the-way, uh, or out-of-the-box, uh, thinking for how to help our citizens not have to use Highway ninety-eight to get from the north sou- north side to the south side. And, um, probably, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, ju- you know, just speculate here, but, uh, with the master planning that, uh, FDOT underwent in Navarre, that, uh, was laid out after significant amount of design funding had been spent, and the Navarre community, uh, by majority did not care for those plans, that probably prompted, uh, FDOT to suggest something different, uh, to Mayor Fitch, and that was, before they got too far down the road with, uh, looking at a design concept for three ninety-nine, they invited the City of Gulf Breeze to do our own analysis and put forward a concept on the table that they then could have in their mind's eye of what we would like to see. And so with that invitation, one year ago, uh, our mayor and council, uh, put together a funding plan and moved forward with the, uh, RFP. In November of twenty nineteen, uh, you awarded, uh, the design to McKimmon Creed and the Volker team who are here this evening. I just want to remind you that the, uh, the concept that you'll be reviewing tonight is more than just a pretty picture. A lot of data and analysis has gone into, uh, what would work and what wouldn't for this proposal. The total design contract is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That is a significant investment in your CRA to make sure that we are part of the initial conversation with FDOT, rather than just have a state highway agency put upon us, the most efficient design that may work for beach traffic, but doesn't address the multimobility and doesn't address the economic development needs that we have in our community. And so with that in mind, we made the significant investment. Uh, more than half of that is for the data collection and data and analysis, and the remaining, of course, is for the, uh, the concept design and for those, uh, meetings. And so that's the background of why we're here today. A lot of work has to happen after this. Uh, tomorrow is the kickoff for FDOT's, uh, beginning of their, um, independent study. And so they, along this way, have been working with, uh, Volker and McKimmon Creed. They've been talking back and forth, but they are also going to be having their own independent study, but they will in their mind's eye have in mind what the City of Gulf Breeze wants, and it will, uh, hopefully be a very collaborative process. So, does anyone have any questions or comments about that background before we move on presentations? Okay. All right. And so we have with us, uh, this evening, uh, Mike Orne- Warnke. Let me make sure I get that right.
Warnke.
Warnke, okay. You know, I haven't tried to write that phonetically, so I would get that right. Um, but I did, but I know I'm gonna nail Brian's because it's Brian Walker, and we know Brian Walker, so he's a local Gulf Breeze resident. Brian is with McKimmon Creed, uh, Mike has been lead with Volker, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Mike. And I, I believe also, do we have Diane Dameron on the phone? Leslie, do we have Diane, the traffic engineer, on the line before we can call her?
Um, is there someone else on the phone?
She's got the caller number. I hope she's available.
Someone calling, is she in?
Yeah, that should be her.
Is that Diane?
Yes.
Diane, are you online?
Okay, perfect. All right, Mike, take the left.
She's hopefully, just in case there's questions. Um, so you kind of got started again. We appreciate your time and, um, thank you for having us here. Um, let's see. It's, uh...
Samantha.
Samantha, yes, I'm sorry. As she stated, uh, we, we came under contract, uh, November of two thousand and nineteen, uh, with McKimmon Creed and Volker, and they're designing the multi-use path project, so that's part of the coordination in this. So this, we basically had two tasks here. It's develop conceptual design concepts for safe multimodal connection across ninety-eight. Again, that needs to be coordinated with the Shoreline Multi-Use Path Project, and then develop design concepts for the redesign of the Pensacola Beach Interchange. And as Samantha said, part of that is, uh, the goal in that was to develop and provide multimodal connection to, from proper to the national seashore, which you don't have now, as well as regain some of that, um, developable property to the north and south of the interchange, which we'll see when we look at the concept that we see, or we feel we met those goals. First part of the project was data collection, so we got some preliminary geotech data. We coordinated this, obviously, again, with the multi-use path project and looked at, um, potential ending points for that, because that's where we want these overpasses or underpasses to go. The preliminary geotech data was used to look at, really establish water tables, to look at underpasses, whether that was feasible or not, as well as see if there's any, um, soils that jump out that could have some structural issues, um, down the line. Then the other big part of the, um, data collection was traffic counts. And so we coordinated these efforts with the city as well as the school for key, uh, dates and times for activities going on, so we could capture the most use. So we got, um, twenty-four hour multimodal pedestrian counts, which includes bikes, peds, and golf carts. Uh, I'm not gonna read through all these locations, but, and then we got traffic movement, car traffic counts and, uh, movement counts at the, at the locations on the right-hand side. Unfortunately, um, some of that was planned after COVID hit, um, so when we had COVID, basically shut down everything and shut down the schools, the determination was made to move forward with the data that we had. So the highlighted, um, traffic counts, we're not able to take, or, uh, multimodal counts. What we did end up doing, though, is here when we got back into beach season and saw the beach traffic pick way back up, uh, we were able to get counts on Saturday, July eighteenth, uh, for the Pensacola Beach Interchange, which are ultimately what we use, because they're, they're much higher than what we received before. So, so with the data analysis, um, basically what it told us on the preliminary geotechnical data, that an underpass is not really a viable option in this area. Um, basically, you have water table at about ten feet, and that's about the minimum you would have to go to make an underpass work without raising the road up, which raising Highway ninety-eight isn't really a viable option. So that threw out underpasses out. Um, then with the traffic data, the, the volumes, honestly, with the pedestrians and cyclists, were not really that high in the corridor, even during the school time and the school usage. But we feel in discussions with the city, they feel that the, with the tie-in to the multi-use path, basically, if you build it, they'll come, you know? If it's there, it ties into the multi-use path on Shoreline Drive, eventually extends on the other side on the north side, um, over there as well, you know, people will certainly use it if it's there. Um, and then for the current, the vehicular operations, and we all know this, driving on Highway ninety-eight, basically, they're at or near capacity. Um, so that's not a surprising information there. Um, next, I'm gonna walk through kind of how we got to, uh, the final recommendations and the final, um, um, renderings that we're showing here. Uh, initially, we had a, um, June fourth, we had our initial meeting. This was before even all the data, we had all the data. Um, and we looked at, basically, the, the pedestrian numbers, and so we were proposing only at that time. And at that time, too, we didn't even have the geotech, so we were showing an underpass as a possibility. But we were showing, basically, one underpa- or one crossing to be used in conjunction with the existing overpass that's already in front of the school, and that would be up near, um, Hoffman and Andrew Jackson, near the baseball stadium. Um, and then for the interchange, we were looking at, basically, a flyover concept with an on-grade roundabout, and the two options there would be a full flyover with, uh, a roundabout underneath, or just an eastbound flyover with an offset roundabout. They both allow you to get the traffic on and off the beach. Um, from that meeting, basically, the input we got from the city was to further develop the north, um, overpass option, um, look at an overpass option in front of the school, near the medical center at Daniel Drive, and then look at another one south near Shoreline Drive. And then at that point, we were looking at really furli- further developing the, uh, single lane, or the roundabout with the single flyover of the eastbound at that point is, is where we're moving. Um, but that changes at the end. Um, so then July, or June twenty-fifth, we came back and had another meeting. Um, and here's the further development of that northern overpass. Again, that's at the baseball stadium with the, uh, undeveloped property just south of Flowerama there. Um, the idea and the concept would be to add some parking for the baseball stadium, um, on that parcel if it was obtained, and then build a multimodal overpass, so it'd have ramps, uh, to meet ADA requirements to get over the Highway ninety-eight. And then...
Would there be a sidewalk then that would go along the side of the baseball field?
Well, the, the idea would be to tie it into the multimodal path that McKimmon Creed's doing on the one side, and then obviously, there's the, there's an existing sidewalk right now on Highway ninety-eight.
Right.
In front of the baseball stadium, but the idea, I, I assume, would be to extend the multimodal path along the north side there in Andrew Jackson around the high school and all that.
But the multi-path doesn't go down there. It, it stops right there at, um, Chanticleer. It doesn't go to that point.
No, I know, it would have to be extended.
Oh.
Yeah.
We make sound like it was our, if that was already part of the plan.
Well, the, part of the plan would be the, the project that's currently under design to tie in here on the Flowerama side, and then on the baseball stadium side would be another project in the future.
Have to create it, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure...
Just talk about making that a boulevard, too, potentially, remember?
Are we talking about, make sure, Councilman Slater, I understood your question. You're talking about the, on the north side of the highway?
Correct.
Whether there would be connectivity with the sidewalk?
No, that's not my, my question. My question is, right now, the multi-path ends right there at CBS. It doesn't come down to that point right there where you're, you're talking about, right?
So we removed from the scope of the Loop project where it would fall, because if, the, the analysis, this component was so heavy, we didn't want to hold up the Loop and the, you know, the rehab of Shoreline and Fairpoint. So you're right, that on most sides of the Loop, whether it's on Shoreline or on Daniel, it stopped short because we were yet to determine where these overpasses would go. And so now that you're gonna be considering this and talking about it, once we have it more finalized, we also need to talk about where it's gonna land on the north side of the highway, and to Mayor Fitch's point, uh, where it's gonna connect, because on the Walmart side, there is a sidewalk and in front of the new hotel, you know, that, but it's on the other side of the road. So would you do a raised crosswalk, but would you want to encourage on that boardwalk for multimobility across the road, or would it make more sense to just continue on the sidewalk? And that's a conversation we haven't had yet. Um, we've just moved forward with the design of the Loop, but we did not bring it all the way to the highway because this study for the last year has been ongoing, and we did not know what would make most sense based on, you know, behaviors, walking, and, um, golf carts and so forth.
Well, the only reason I bring that up is, why didn't, did we look at the other, at the other intersection where the, where the multi-path already ends? Did we look at that intersection, too? Is it just crazy with the Chick-fil-A?
They, they did.
Yeah, there's no, there's no...
The first meeting that, um, that Mike is sharing with you, when he said the city, you know, suggested this and that, we spent, I mean, the majority of the time is, based on their data and collection, here is where the traffic is, based on feasibility and costs and other factors where it makes sense. And so we did look at some of those, um, different locations, yeah.
Because you're just, you're probably, I can't, I guess I can't think of the landing area around Chick-fil-A or...
There is one, without buying a prop, I mean...
But we didn't buy property there.
Yeah, but it's undeveloped, it's undeveloped property.
So I'm gonna ask quick, Chamberlain.
Yeah, Councilman Slater's correct. It ends at the CBS.
You could possibly tell, but we didn't know each other's first name. He's been doing the real work, so.
If, if and when, uh, council approves these overpasses, we've already been in talks with McKimmon Creed on extending the multi-use path to these, these two locations. But we would keep the pathway going through the CBS parking lot to give people multimodal access to that commercial corridor. So essentially, it would split Hoffman Drive right there. So we would continue the path from the Methodist Church down Hoffman Drive to this new location, but also keep the old location. So if and when council approves this...
You're, you're saying that, so you're gonna go back and keep the, the path crossing over on Fairpoint, right before you get to the Methodist Church, and taking it on that side, and you're gonna, you're gonna carry, continue the multi-path on the Methodist Church, parking and all that, and go, and go circum Hoffman, too? Is that what you're talking about?
If and when council approves this overpass, we would extend the pathway to, uh, the new location. So yes, in that short area in front of the church, it would be, uh, the pathway would be on both sides of the road, uh, keeping in mind that you would still want to have a crossing there in front of the church to give people access to that commercial corridor, CBS.
I can see that.
And why? So, but we've also looked at maybe going behind the church. That's kind of a phase two, if and when y'all approve this, and so it might not be, you know, we've looked at other options on not taking the church's parking and looked at the negative aspects of that.
Yeah, I think there will definitely need to be an expansion, because that area is very heavily used by golf carts, by bicyclists.
Yes.
We have a lot of people ask for, you know, raised crosswalks, and so I don't think there's just gonna be, you know, one solution. Um, I think over a period of years, you'll, you'll see us trying to look at behaviors, and then we may end up going behind the church or...
And...
That was the church's idea.
That was the church's suggestion.
The church's idea was...
We've been talking.
We had, at other meetings, we discussed when we were talking about the Holiday Inn Express coming in on, uh, the Daniel, the Daniel Brown Street or that, on here, Andrew Jackson, but we had talked about if that site's still having, I think, one or two more out parcels for potential growth.
Yes.
Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And we discussed about the problem that we have at North Cliff, trying to get in and out because of the Chick-fil-A and all the traffic and what have you. That might end up becoming a boulevard that you envisioned, you brought to the council. That, if that's the case, then that dot would potentially look at the potential of making an intersection there, because we have no east access. We have limited access getting into that area with the new hotels, so that, if that potentially becomes a boulevard and intersection, then that would interfere with the location of that multimodal overpass.
It, it wouldn't, it would not interfere with multimodal overpass. I will tell you that that vacant lot, uh, was purchased, and there are, um, preliminary plans being considered by staff for, uh, office space there. And so, conditions are changing. You know, you are gonna have more trips. Uh, the city is, you know, requested from FDOT the redesign that closed that intersection. It may be that we have to go back and do analysis, um, and see if that is to change. But all the more reason, if you're having more trips on the highway, and, and we acknowledge that because of behavior, this is where you have a lot of multimobility, and we don't want, we don't want to tamp down and outlaw golf carts. That has already been asked and answered. It took several years, and we now have a golf cart ordinance. And so how can you ensure that they get safely from one side of the road to the other?
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I don't wanna do that. I just wanna make sure that when they're designing this, that they're, they have the bigger, bigger vision to look at the potential, that may become an intersection. So they keep that in mind when designing it, so that it doesn't become, oh, we gotta change this because that may have interfered with something.
And, and another good thing to think about with that is the existing pedestrian overpass. There's a traffic signal right after that. And we did, in that first meeting, kinda looked at how that worked and did it obstruct the view. So that certainly is a consideration. But just, you know, to the physical limitations, one wouldn't negatively affect the other. And you would still have visibility with the light. Oh, great, those are great comments.
Oh, by the way, okay, so if that property is under contract, then that would not be available for parking, right?
We were talking about the out parcel next to the hotel. That's the Walmart commercial parcel across from the baseball fields, yes.
I thought it was the one...
On the south side of the highway. For this, that is available, there's speculative development. But thus far, the, the potential buyer, it's not under contract and it isn't zoned appropriately. And so, you know, the Realtor has shared with us that the potential buyer is still interested in buying it and thinks that a rezoning would be successful. We have really urged them not to, that that isn't the case. I mean, a conference of plan amendment and a rezoning is very unlikely when it only affects one parcel of land. But there are ongoing discussions that ultimately, I guess, another, you know, potential buyer could come in. So it's actively being listed right now.
But I would think with the new codes of the setbacks and the landscaping requirements and everything, it would be, you'd never be able to get a convenience store back on that piece of property.
That isn't what is being proposed, and I hesitate to say out loud, but I will tell you that you won't like it.
I would say, well, I would think with the new landscaping requirements and the setbacks and the fencing and all this other stuff that has been put on ninety-eight, that it would make it a very small and, and limited parking, I would think, for as big as that intersection.
It would be, and I guess there's, I mean, it's no problem with me saying, but it, you, you, this might jog something in your memory, cause we communicated about, about six months ago, and then the most recent update a couple of weeks ago, they're still talking, it's for a potential car wash.
Is it Ronny's, we need more Ronny's going?
Right, we need more car washes, right? And so it's not zoned appropriately for that, but the individual lives on the beach and is sure that he would be able to, if he explained, you know, his position, that he would prevail in a change to our official zoning map. And we, we relate to the Realtor, that's not likely. But anyway, that's what's going on there.
There was the city wanting, wants five feet off the city.
Sorry about that.
Oh, you're fine. So secondly, we've got the site that was further requested in front of the school in the Medical Plaza there at Daniel. There are some inherent issues with that. Number one, that's not a good landing point for the multimodal use path. Number two, due to limitations, especially at the Medical Plaza, you're gonna have to meet ADA by putting in elevators, so it's not really multimodal. But this is a concept that we requested. It, it also would lose parking at the school, which is another issue. So there are some inherent issues with that, and it doesn't move forward. So just to limit your concern there. And the last site would be there at Shoreline. And this site is on an undeveloped parcel, again, that's available. They're just south of the, what is that, gas station or whatever it's called?
Yeah, that's, that's right.
And then it actually goes over to the Publix Shopping Center. And, and the concept here, it, of course, there's been no discussions with Publix yet. But it only loses Publix four parking spaces. I think it's a great amenity for them to allow the multi-use traffic to get to their shopping center. And so you can see what the redevelopment or, or what would be required at the shopping center. So then lastly, at this meeting, we presented again further development of the interchange concept. Again, this was still showing the single flyover for eastbound traffic only and an offset roundabout to the south. And what this didn't provide, that came back after the meeting, was access to the north from McClure Drive. So we were asked to, to, after this meeting, to further develop a full flyover with a roundabout underneath for local traffic, and then tie it into McClure Drive. And that's in accordance with the City of Gulf Breeze Gateway Master Plan, which, which showed the tie into the north there. So when you get into the final concept, you'll be able to go north off the beach without getting on Highway ninety-eight. So. So moving on to June sixteenth, we had our final concept meeting. The first couple here are pretty much the same on the, the pedestrian overpasses, so I'm gonna kinda skip through those. Maybe, if it'll let me. And go on to the beach interchange. And so what you see there and what you have, and this is basically the final concept you'll see on the rendering, is the full flyover with a roundabout for local beach traffic. It's a two-lane roundabout. You've got the slip lane for the beach traffic going to the south. So it's basically the same traffic movement as it was before. You've got a slip lane to avoid the roundabout going north to the east, which is currently a stop condition. So it actually, that should be a merge condition in the end. So that should improve that movement. And then you've got your north to westbound, you interact with the roundabout. And then east to southbound is the main roundabout traffic. And we'll get into the functionality of that here in a minute. Then moving into the rendering, so this is Site A, where the potential overpass would go, existing. And then again, this is the concept proposed. The aesthetics of this and architectural features right now are very conceptual. I mean, this is something that we kinda came together. I, 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 from talking to Craig and staff, I think it's, you know, along the lines of what they like and the coloring and stuff. So potentially, this is how it could look like, but it could look way different in the end, just to be clear on that. But this, this has basically ADA, multi-use paths. Again, this is showing the overflow parking or parking for the baseball stadium as a potential option there.
Do you mind waiting? With this picture then, so we're talking about a sidewalk that could go on this side? Or we would figure out how to...
Well, I mean, this tie, there's a sidewalk on ninety-eight already, so this will tie into a sidewalk.
No, I'm talking about going, I'm talking about going...
Into North Cliff.
North Cliff.
Yeah, you, that would be another part of a, another project.
Okay.
That would come in the future.
Perhaps when we look to boulevard the road, that you could put a sidewalk on the east side. There is a sidewalk on the west, but that's not preferable. I mean, for one, crossing the road, but then also all the ingress egress into Walmart, yeah.
So that, you, you're saying golf carts will be on there, bikes, wheelchairs, all that will be on that?
Right, yeah.
But the current flyover, golf carts are not supposed to go on that one, right?
Right.
They're not supposed to.
I've seen them do it.
Cause the high school coaches use them, I've seen one on a golf cart.
I'm just, you know, it's because this one's gonna be wider, it's gonna be less steep. Why would this one be more suitable than the one that they have?
Well, yeah, I mean, you designed it for the use of the golf cart, so that's, that's number one.
So what, is it ten feet wide or...
So it'd be... Ten feet's what a multi-use path minimum is. So I mean, that would be a minimum. And that's the, that's allowed, golf carts are allowed to use that, so I would think that'd be the minimum. I think probably for comfort level, you'd probably wanna go a little wider than that, just so people are comfortable, but...
The overpass we have now there is, is listed as a sidewalk, so...
And it, it doesn't meet current ADA standards. So just note that, like, the ramping that you see here is gonna be more substantial than what you have now.
Cause it's too steep.
Yeah, it's too steep. And it's supposed, every three feet, you've gotta have a landing, a flat landing, which that one doesn't have now.
Every, how many feet?
Every three feet, a vertical rise.
Okay.
Sorry, not, not horizontal, no, no. Every three feet, a vertical rise, you gotta have a flat landing. So it'll be more substantial than what you see existing now.
Mike, speak to the actual unit itself, you know, what we're talking about here for construction, the way it's kinda prefabricated.
Well, what we've kinda thrown, base, our concept is based on a prefab, the, the, actual bridge itself is a prefab bridge product that's made by contact. They, they make piping and all kinds of stuff, but they make actual bridges. We did a similar project in Foley, Alabama. I wonder if you've been seeing that? Now, it's got...
They have elevators.
Yeah, they have elevators. Cause they didn't have the room for ADA. And it's not multimodal, I mean, it's pedestrian, but it's similar. But those come, basically, they can span up to two hundred and fifty feet with custom design, but their standard designs can span two hundred and twenty-five feet, or no, I think it's two hundred and thirty-five feet. And every one of these we proposed are under that two hundred and thirty-five feet. So that should come in one piece, prefab from the factory, very easy installation. And then, of course, you design the piers and the, the components on each end, so...
Mike, does the design of these, does it include just a straight-up stairwell for folks? Cause my, my, the reason for asking this is that I think one of the things we want to have happen is that students and schools use this instead of darting across Highway ninety-eight.
Of course.
And my observation of them is that they'll do that instead of doing the walk-around. And if they're on the bicycle, it's something that's different, but if they're walking...
The concepts we're showing here don't have stairs, but they could certainly be integrated.
So in the top, you could incorporate a stairwell where they could come out and do and be right at that level, which is a good point.
Yeah, yeah.
Or even they could elevate a stairwell if you wanted to have...
Yeah. I mean, we didn't show those on the concept, but there's certainly, that's, that could be integrated and just like, very easily.
I think it'd be more likely to use it than walking the whole... It is, yeah. So they always come in there.
Uh, what we were proposing is an upgrade so that it would be, you know, it would look the same as these. Now, again, all of this is, we're talking about long-range transportation planning. So it's a matter of funding, all those sorts of things. But ultimately, as Mike said, it doesn't meet ADA standards. And so it would make sense that it be upgraded to, to something similar to this, but for pedestrian.
So if somebody asks us, what's the timeline on something like this that we're looking at? Ten years? Don't remember?
Well, it has to do with your funding, Councilman, because these would, like, the existing pedestrian overpass is not owned by FDOT. So unlike the overpass, which is, that's a, a state project that they've invited us to, you know, have input in at the beginning before they get too far down the road, these we would own. And so just like all of your other, you know, large capital projects, we would need to come up with a funding plan for it in the way of grants, state appropriations, trying to leverage our local dollars.
Toll, CRA would...
Toll?
Social tax on businesses located on that, yeah.
Outside the city, I imagine.
What is it estimated cost or something like that?
I'll get there. Saving that.
It was in the manual.
I just got it. Pink still wet.
Sorry.
It makes our street look very nice.
Really fun, I can't get to... So here's a, basically a street view of the same one. And these were aerial drone, or aerial flown, like, I don't remember, maybe six weeks ago now. So these are fairly new pictures. So that would be what it would look like, street view-wise, or could potentially look like. I don't know where this thing's supposed to be pointed at. Doesn't like to work sometimes. Okay, so here's the other site on Shoreline. Again, this one's gonna cross into the Publix Shopping Center. You'll see the hotel that's being built there, and this is potentially what it can look like. Again, the design, and, and like Samantha said, what we talked about internally would be, the most likely, if you're gonna do this, to upgrade the existing, to match these. So, cause otherwise, it would look really out of place. But I would assume that if you touched it, you're gonna have to make it ADA compliant. So you'd have to redo the ramps, and you could potentially just redo the bridge section and, you know, the pillars at the end maybe could look a little different. But architecturally, you could probably make something work.
You have to get the Saint Anne Bell Tower in there, so...
That's true.
One of the batteries died on this side.
Leslie, can you progress with your...
Yeah, if you don't mind, it's not working. So this will be a street view of the same one. Go ahead. That's kinda what it would look like, or potentially could look like. Okay, then you go on to the next one. So this is the interchange, as we talked about. This is obviously what it looks like now. But that's called a trumpet interchange. It's kind of an outdated interchange right now. And as we know, I mean, it takes up a lot of that property on the north side. And that's part of the goal on this property, or on this project. The bridge section that crosses ninety-eight is currently, is built in like nineteen sixty-two. It's currently functionally obsolete is where, how it's classified. And it doesn't meet current clearance standard. I think the clearance is only fourteen-four, and the current standard is seventeen-six. So it's not even close. So that's another reason to push for this project. If you wanna move forward. So here's again what, what this would look like as a rendering with the roundabout underneath for local traffic. Again, your movement onto the beach is no different. We're actually using these potentially, I mean, the concept's using the same exact lanes that are there today. So that movement's not changing. Again, coming off the beach, going eastbound is currently a stop movement, which I, what you'd end up here would be a merge, so that would actually get better. And then you've got your two-lane roundabout, and that's really...
I'd like to talk about that, the two-lane roundabout heading west. I don't see that, I don't think that's gonna work.
I don't think it's gonna work either.
It wasn't one lane.
It's gonna slow down.
I know, but that definitely wasn't gonna work.
That would, yeah, one lane, that would really have been one, yeah.
Mike, cause I don't, I don't, I'm not getting it. I don't see how two lanes slow traffic down or are gonna...
You have two lanes now.
I know, but...
You, but you're gonna slow down when you approach the, the roundabout. It's just a natural thing. You've got other intersecting cars coming from the east, it's gotta merge into it if you have cars coming from the east. And then the people coming off the beach, it's gotta go west. You also have people coming out of the neighborhood in McClure, Plantation, and Andrews, trying to merge in, maybe go to the beach with the people that are coming off the beach. Now, you don't have any interference when you're calling the overpass.
It's gonna be a nightmare in the afternoon.
It's gonna be a nightmare. I agree, I don't think it's...
Your choke, I mean, honestly, your choke point is gonna be the same exactly as now, which is the traffic light down the way. There's gonna be no difference.
I think you're gonna back people up on the bridge coming from the bridge.
I don't, I don't see that, that, it's gonna be a new choke point, so you're right there underneath that bridge.
And you also lose an east, eastbound way that you, you know, currently have. You can go, not that it's the safest, if you're coming out on McClure or Andrews and you wanna cross ninety-eight, go east, you can, you can do that.
Right there, like, in the face.
You totally lose it eastbound all the way.
Yeah.
So you'll have to find an alternate eastbound.
You would go through the roundabout, go and...
If you can. Hey, show me how you do it. Ain't gonna happen.
You'd come here, go down on the beach and turn around.
Yeah, I wanna go on the beach and turn around and get in that traffic.
But that, but the concern you're talking about's when everybody's coming off the beach.
You're gonna get, there are times that there is a steady, hard line of cars coming off that beach.
Correct.
Back to bumper to bumper, moving, and they, they actually, if you look at the old overpass, they swing across here eas- easily without any restriction to stopping till they get a way to merge in.
Correct.
What you got here is they're gonna slow down when you approach the, the roundabout, interact with cars that may be coming off from the east trying to go to the beach. And they're gonna slow down because these cars are gonna wanna get into the roundabout to go back to the beach. Then they're gonna come in and interact with people coming out of McClure and Andrews that may be wanting to go to the beach or wanting to go this way. Then they're gonna come in and interact with people coming out of McClure and Andrews that may be wanting to go to the beach or wanting to go this way. Before they can get on this to go merge in, you're gonna back people up on that bridge.
I think it's more of a concern.
It's a concern, and I see, you haven't really improved, I mean, going to the beach is the same, you still got two lanes going to the beach, two lanes going to the beach just like before. You're gonna slow off the traffic coming off the beach. And usually when it backs up going to the beach, it's not people going east, they back up all through Bell Pries to get to these two lanes. Um, once you get to this point here, you're gonna have three lanes apparently crossing the bridge, correct, you flyover?
Right now, it's still two lanes.
But I mean, eventually.
DOT is gonna go through.
Eventually, something's gonna have to happen on the other side, cause we only got two lanes going through, um, the rest of Bell Pries, to the Naval Oaks. But I don't, it, it's not improving anything going to the beach. Do I see, you see any improvement?
No.
I think, I just see.
You know, going to the beach.
Is the same.
Yeah, I, I agree, but the problem is not the rubbers, it's, it's the.
The intersection on the beach is the problem.
Yeah, well, the beach is only, you, you, you're confined, confined to the two lanes crossing the bridge. There's two lanes on the bridge going to the beach. And you can't change that. So you still got two lanes going in, but you're slowing off beach traffic, I think.
But I, I would think that.
I, I think coming off this, I think, I mean, everything else looks pretty good, except for coming off the beach.
Coming off the beach is a big issue.
I don't think it'll work.
Well, okay. I'm gonna move on to the analysis that says it will work.
Go ahead, dude.
And then I'm gonna let Diane chime in, hopefully.
Okay.
You saw what I see.
So, the traffic analysis of the round, basically it's a roundabout analysis, and it's of the traffic you're talking about. So, again, we, we went back on July eighteenth and took traffic counts. Um, on that day, and just so everybody can, and there's not a direct correlation between these numbers, but I have the numbers, so I'm gonna throw them out there. On that day, twenty-one thousand cars went through the Twelve Plaza. Everybody hears the Twelve Plaza numbers. That day, twenty-one thousand cars. Um, the highest volume that's been lately, I know there's an article in the paper for, um, mid-June, I think we had a week, and it was like twenty-two thousand cars, so that's a very high level of cars that went through on the day we took our counts. So we took our counts on that day, and we projected them out to a design year of two thousand forty-five, that's typical DOT designs, twenty-five-year design year. So we projected that number out twenty-five years. And then we ran our analysis. And what you end up with, with all the traffic movements you're concerned about, is the roundabout operates a level service C or better for all the traffic movements. And the overall intersection is a, the roundabout is a level service A, which is like the best you can do. And then you, you do have a dual-lane roundabout will require to accommodate the high volumes of the northbound and the westbound that you're concerned about. So. And, and I know, I've been through this argument, discussion, whatever you wanna say a thousand times, until people see the functionality of a roundabout, you're not gonna believe that they function, and that how much more traffic and how much more vehicles it can handle than a standard intersection.
May I ask a couple of questions? Right, the way that it is existing now, the pinch point we have is deeper in the city of Gulf Breeze, because you have people coming off of the beach, and you have Highway ninety-eight traffic going east, and they merge closer to our town center. And so, it would appear to me that what Councilman Aver is alluding to is that you're having traffic from, coming from the east, which FDOT has plans to widen the highway coming into the city. And so, we're talking about more traffic. And the other proposals that you looked at, such as a traffic light, we know what traffic lights do, they stop the traffic, that's the problem on the beach. So when we look at existing, if you're gonna be widening the highway coming into the city, which we know FDOT is doing that, I mean, that, that's happening, the bridge is being widened, and then Naval Oaks, that area is being widened. This is a pinch point, and right now, that pinch point, when it all merges together, is happening closer to the town center. And so, we're talking about, was what to do here, given that factor. If we do a traffic light and a T connector, then you're stopping traffic. And so, this is not a panacea, it's not gonna fix all ills, but what it does is it makes sure that traffic continues to move. So that traffic from the east, it enters the roundabout, keeps going east, traffic that goes to the beach, it enters the roundabout, you're absolutely right, but it keeps moving, and then goes to the beach. So, I'm looking at this as a staff person, and if I thought it was a stinker, we wouldn't have spent eighty-plus thousand dollars on this component to bring it to you. It is because, aside from your consultant engineers, our staff looked at this and said, if it's good enough for Seventeenth Avenue, if it's good enough for Pensacola on their side, and the traffic that backs up all the way onto Palafax, then it should be able to be scaled and work in this application as well, and what is an alternative?
Well, you're not comparing apples to apples, when you talk about traffic backing up of Seventeenth Avenue.
Right, they had a red light there.
Versus traffic backing up coming off that beach at two.
They're removing their lights.
They're, they're, they're getting a big benefit because they're removing a traffic signal, we don't even have a signal here now, beginning with.
Well, your pinch point's still gonna be the same traffic signal.
Well, can I give you an idea, a suggestion, maybe an idea that I thought of while looking at this? Which you brought up, a good point, if you have three lanes coming from the east, the people that currently now come in, that, they come over here, there's one lane that they come in, and they make that loop, and they go around and go to the beach. If they're coming from this way here now, they have one lane coming in, one lane going around, and one lane to the beach, it's no different than what it is now. No different. If you was to take this overpass and widen it to give you the three lanes through, make it where it's still the same, got the same sweeping bin like this, and you could increase this to two lanes over here, when this thing is widened and spread, you could have two lanes here to go into the two lanes here, so you got a potential for eastbound two and westbound two. Here, you still only have eastbound one, period. You have two, but that's the same as we got now.
You think there's an issue with eastbound traffic gang on the beach?
When we have three other lanes, if we have three potential lanes, you could, it would give you the ability to expand into coming in from the east, if, if we so desired, here, you do not have that ability. Cause you gotta, you gotta navigate this circle that everybody else is trying to navigate. Right now, nobody has to deal with each other doing that.
You'll have to remember that.
Really, this is the pinch point.
Well, what we're talking about now is widening the amount of land that the existing overpass is using versus trying to come up with, you know, with maintaining or increasing functionality. What the roundabout does is it opens that up for economic development.
Then, yeah, I understand what you're talking about by utilizing this and this. It also looks really nice, the way it's landscaped, and we have, we've decorated for Christmas. It doesn't look like we've, we've jammed in with so much building and every little interest space that we got. It gives a little bit of openness, look to, to the city, in my opinion.
Well, we can certainly, that would be a policy decision of the council to say to Andrews, who is partnered with IHMC, and IHMC has developable land in Pensacola. And so, that, it can be a policy decision that the council makes as it relates to Zix, Sepp River, and Andrews. Right now, we know that those two entities and their growth plans, expansion is a constant economic development conversation, and it's why, in this proposal, you're looking at doing three things. Obviously, the multi-use connectivity would be a nice amenity, but it isn't as important as ensuring your existing high-waist jobs can stay and grow. And at the same time, making sure that we're addressing this pinch point to the widening lanes on either side of it.
So what this concept does, again, is that right there is an acre and a half of potential developable property. And that's three and a half acres.
And it's gonna add more traffic to the area, too, then, wouldn't it? I just think that you're bringing all that beach traffic through, I don't know, most of the neighborhood before it has to get on to ninety-eight to get out.
Mike, is there, uh, something, and, cause I'm not very good at visualizing all this, but would there be a drawing that would be this, with the amount of traffic you know that would be coming off, and actually, we could see the movement of everything?
You can do a, 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 you can do a simulation of traffic, a model. Um, I, I can tell you from experience, you're not gonna believe it, I, I've been through this, we did the Pensacola Beach Roundabout, we're the ones who proposed that. Went through all that process, and nobody wants to believe what the model's showing. We showed the model of the roundabout on the beach compared to, you know, synced up with real-life traffic at the signal. And showed you, eh, you know, showed you the cars backing up at the signal, you know, off the screen, basically, and five or six cars backing up at the roundabout. And, and the traffic was the same amount of traffic, and nobody wants to believe it. Yes, it can be done, but in my opinion, everybody's gonna look at it and go, that's not true. Cause that's what I've heard, that's, that's what I've heard over and over again, that's not true. Um, I will say, too, if you look in your, in the report, in appendix, um, and I know this is a lot of, you know, I don't know how to say it, I mean, it's very technical, but in appendix eight is the SIDRA traffic analysis, which is, SIDRA is basically the program that's used to analyze, uh, roundabouts. And what you'll see there is if you look at the summary pages, um, the PQ distance, uh, for AM peak traffic, again, another thing you have to remember here that we all know is in the morning, most of the traffic's going on the beach, in the afternoon, most traffic's going off. So you don't have consistent traffic, you know, going, I mean, I, I know people go in the afternoon for the, you know, go to restaurants or whatever, and that, that happens, but it's consistently most people coming off in the afternoon and on in the morning. So, the PQ in the morning for the roundabout is a hundred and thirty-one feet. At, at the movement, and this is going from east, so this is the movement he's talking about in the morning, is a hundred and thirty-one feet. So that's roughly ten cars deep. In the afternoon, the peak movement, the PQ in the afternoon is a hundred and seventy-two feet. I know that may not mean a lot, but.
So how many cars is that?
About fifteen cars. With the delay, and that, that, that's still a level service A for the intersection, which is the highest level service you could have.
And I think from a common sense standpoint, if you really think about how the roundabout's gonna function at different parts of the day, on the weekend, which that's what everybody's concerned about is the weekend. In the morning time, there's gonna be minimal traffic coming off the beach, and most of the traffic's gonna be going onto the beach. So you've got eastbound traffic on ninety-eight that's gonna be entering the roundabout, and they're gonna have, the only cars they're gonna have to wait for and pause before they get into the roundabout is the minimal traffic that's coming off the beach. So most of that eastbound traffic is gonna pause for half a second, they're gonna look to the left, nobody's coming off the beach, then they're gonna make the move to the roundabout, they're gonna go on their way. That's how the morning, same thing with the people coming out of the St. Francis or McClure Drive, it's gonna be the same. They might have to wait for half a second for a break in the eastbound traffic, but in the morning time, most of the traffic's coming from Pensacola, there are some people coming from the west, but a bulkhead is coming from Pensacola. In the afternoon, you've got the same thing. The people that are coming off the beach.
Are around this.
Are gonna have to pause for the traffic that is making this move, that move, right there. So that means that somebody who's coming eastbound or from McClure and going full circle around, I mean, people that are actually gonna make this movement is almost nothing. So people are gonna come off the beach, nobody's really gonna be really making this movement. They're gonna pause for two seconds, and then they're gonna continue through the traffic circle, and these people are gonna have to sit here and wait for a break. Rightfully so, there's a whole lot of traffic that comes off the beach, but there are breaks. I've seen traffic, it's sixty thousand cars per day on the streets, and there are breaks. So they, you know, these people that are having to go, if they wanna go to the beach in the evening, all the traffic's going off the beach, you know, they might have to sit there for a minute or two minutes, they'll find a break, the break will come. But in terms of backing up the cars, the big concern about backing up a queue of cars going across, back across the beach, these people are basically gonna have the right of way, they're gonna get to the roundabout, hardly anybody's gonna be making this movement, so everybody's just gonna enter the, enter the roundabout hardly with any delay and then keep on going. So, I mean, just if, if you look at it from how it's gonna function at different times of the day, I think it makes a little more sense.
What's the overall experience with crashes with, with roundabouts versus other standard intersections? And the reason I ask is that I've been to a lot of places where they've introduced them, and people don't seem to know what they're doing. And when they handle, I mean, they're, they're just like this.
I mean, there is a learning curve there, the roundabouts are much safer. Um, number one, you, as Brian just showed, you're looking at one turning movement, or you're, you're concerned about one interaction point, and that's to the left. So you go up to it, you're looking to the left, you're not looking right, left, straight ahead. If you look at the conflict points of a standard intersection, and I'm gonna, Diane, are you still on the phone? This is more her. I don't know if y'all will be able to hear.
Yeah, I'm here.
Like, a standard intersection has how many conflict points? Say, like, a two-lane intersection?
A, a typical signalized intersection is gonna have anywhere from sixteen to like thirty-two conflict points. Um, cause you've got so many different directions that you have to look in turns and rights and lefts through. Um, for a roundabout, you're basically, all your, if you have any crashes, they're usually side-squeaked to right, uh, rear ends, and they're very limited in terms of, um, their crash severity, um, and they're usually just, you know, minor and can be moved out of the way very quickly. If you have a head-on or a side-squeak at a signalized intersection, typically, you're gonna shut the intersection down, um, for, for quite some period of time. And the severity is usually much higher.
Would you agree, the current method that is coming off there, there are no conflicts for that, exit at all?
Correct.
None, but you're gonna create some with the roundabout. You're not comparing intersection apples to apples.
Yeah, you have a free-flow exit right now.
Free, free flow.
You, you do, but, but you're still, your, your pinch point's gonna be the intersection at Daniel Drive. That's really, that's gonna be maintained, no difference, sir.
Well, and I think if you go back to, one of the goals of the project was, you know, to create multimodal connectivity across the city. And while the existing condition provides free-flow connectivity and cars don't have to slow down from forty, fifty miles an hour as they flow through that intersection, you know, people that are on bikes or walking or golf carts or anything else have no access to there.
Yeah.
And I will say, too, with the merge, like with, like the existing merge interchange, those crashes, the, the speeds are gonna be much higher, you're looking completely over your shoulder, and it's a much, much more, um, difficult maneuver to navigate than it is just entering and exiting a, a roundabout. And if you make a poor decision coming off of an interchange, you're gonna end up in a crash. If you make a poor decision in a roundabout, all you have to do is just keep going round and round until you figure out where you need to go out.
That's the part that scares me. You have to, you can have enough of them already going round and round.
I, I was just gonna say, we, I have a comment from Mr. Bell Ween at, um, four oh nine Montrose Boulevard. Mr. Ween said, um, a raised bridge through Gulf Breeze creating a walkable city?
Is that a question?
Um, I think it was a statement. Any question?
I, I've spoken with Mr. Ween, um, before, and he's talking about a flyover that as you were coming off of Pensacola Bay Bridge, that there'd be, I mean, a flyover over the entire span of the city. Yes.
Like to the beach bridge?
Yes.
Like one ten of them?
Yes. Yes. I don't want to, I mean, bring this, you know, to, to find a point if we're still talking about these very good considerations and the pros and the cons, so I may be a little ahead of myself in the conversation. And I sometimes do that, cause I'm trying to figure out, okay, well, where are we going with this? But, um, some, just to share some of what I'm thinking is, you know, FDOT is moving forward with their own independent study. And so, an option is certainly to continue to communicate, you know, our needs and our, uh, desires in a list of priority. And not remove any of those desires we've talked about with multimobility or otherwise, but prioritize them, and then just see what FDOT does. Because if you're, if the council is leaning more towards expanding the current exo- design, I would dare say that's what FDOT's gonna do. Cause they're just gonna be looking at the functionality of the traffic. They're not going to be caring about these other considerations you've heard from, uh, citizens and your broad, you know, uh, stakeholder meetings, when you have town hall meetings. And so, uh, we can continue to coordinate with FDOT, but if you're leaning more towards expanding what's there, I may be wrong, but I would tend to think, you know, ca- FDOT is going to be looking at the cost, and they're gonna be looking at the functionality. So that's likely the, the way that they would go. Um, and, you know, we can just keep communicating with them. What I do hear you, you saying is that everyone recognizes and, and is saying that it would not be your desire to see an intersection, a signalized intersection at that point, is that generally yes?
That's correct.
And, and I would say, as it relates to a roundabout. And, and I would say, as it relates to a roundabout, is that if you're not, i- if you would not support a resolution with a unanimous voice, then it's not ready yet, because you certainly don't want to give FDOT a mixed signal. And so, if there are things about the roundabout concept you want us to do more work on than we can, uh, or what we can do, you know, after this presentation, you know, I think it's fair to say that Volker and McKimmon-Cree delivered based on what we asked them to do. We gave them a framework and said, i- if we're prioritizing, I mean, these things equally, multi-use connectivity, economic development, and transportation of, you know, efficiency, then this is what you get. And now that we know that, we can go back to FDOT, and we're not saying to FDOT, well, what about this, what about that? Because we've looked at this scenario, we've said, well, we understand that it could free up more land, um, but we would have concerns with that. And so, we can work with them and, and just look at designing, or I'm sorry, expanding the existing facility. What do y'all think about that? I just wanna toss out number one, I think, you know, if you have things that you want staff to continue to research, we could continue to go down this lane. Um, but I, I would not, from what I'm hearing, you know, I'm not getting from the mayor and council that you would want us to put this forth in our unofficial staff conversations with FDOT because it doesn't have the unanimous support of our city.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
I, I like the flyover of ninety-eight going over and traffic being on the flow through it. I just think it needs to be worked on more of the traffic coming off the beach and the merging of the other lanes. I, I just think that that circle's too tight, or something's not right. I just think that needs to be looked at, but I like the, the east to west flow, I like the flow to the beach, I like the flow coming off the beach heading east, but the other part of it, I don't like. I wouldn't vote for it right now. If you ask me, I would not vote for that.
I agree, same thing.
I think there's a couple of things. One, for the folks that would be heading south from Andrews going to the beach, is there a way to create, or I'm sorry, going, going north, or coming east on ninety-eight and going north toward Andrews, is there a way to just create, is there enough space there to create a road where they don't have to get on the, the roundabout? Because that, that hits on what Randy was talking about, is that I don't, I don't think you're gonna have a whole lot of people, Randy, going just north to the beach when everybody's spilling off traffic, and if they did, then you just kinda figure out the pattern yourself, and you go down to Daniel Drive, you know, through Publix parking lot or something. If it's just that bad, I mean, there are just a few-
Are you saying people on ninety-eight wanting to go north? Is that what you're saying? Or people coming out the beach wanting to go?
Yeah, yeah, we're coming east on ninety-eight, there are two things, one, we're going east on ninety-eight, and would there be enough space right there on the left?
I mean, pretty much they're essentially bypassing the roundabout right now, I think.
Are they?
They have to get on it for a period of time.
Yeah, but, but if we could keep them off of it-
Potentially if the right of way's there, I mean,
Yeah.
You could easily design a little bypass lane right there.
Yeah, but if we could get, if we eliminate that as an issue, and then, um, let the rest of it play out, I think you'd be fine. And people, peak traffic occurs, everybody that lives here, and that's all we really be talking about are people that live here on the north side, they figure out ways to get around. I know we do where we live, Brian, and so you can't, we have to do all kinds of that. Trail bikes and stuff, yeah.
And I, I don't wanna give that up, the roundabout, you know, I like, I just think it's a much cleaner concept, and if we can have more green space or, you know, allow for our industries, you know, the hospital, whatever, to expand if they want to, I think that's valuable. I think, I just, I don't know, I would hate to see what we've got just get bigger. You know, I just, I don't really see how that's gonna minimize the connectivity.
Yeah, well, I don't think we want just anything there, but I, I think kind of businesses that Sam talked about, the expansion of healthcare or technology, those are the kind of things that make the city really better. And draws the kind of people that, that make the city better.
What? What are we gonna say, Jamie?
I mean, if you, if you look at Randy's, what he was saying, if you just reversed it, if, if the road coming from the beach went under the, uh, east and west lanes on ninety-eight, and, and both of them were widened, you know what I'm saying, that you would almost have the same-
So then it-
So, so basically ninety-eight would go over and, and, and the swoop would go under, just like it is, it just wouldn't be a roundabout, you know, and you, you would potentially, you know, just widen all that, maybe.
But then we, we don't reach the objective of creating, uh, more space, right?
Well, you know, gosh, I didn't know that was our objective. It was just, it was trying to make more marketable space. I, I thought it was to try to get the flow of the traffic better and to have, we had, where, where our credent, where our citizens can move east to west and get on the other bike paths and the Live Oaks reservation. I thought that was the whole plan. I didn't know it was to try to have more commercial property along there. So in that respect, yes, you're right.
Well, what you're talking about doesn't allow the multimodal connection either, though.
Yeah, yeah, and, and in respect, it would, because you would have a widening lane of east, east to west ni-, uh-
Right, and you keep going underneath.
But you've got free flow traffic here, our pedestrians-
You would go over it, east to west would go over it. Right now, ain't that what your plan is? How, how are you getting the, the multipath and everything? Aren't you putting them on ninety-eight, on the, like a bike path?
No, they're on this-
What?
They go to the refuge lane. On a roundabout, that's another safety factor.
They get across the roundabout.
The refuge lane, refuge lanes, the refuge-
I, I think it can name for it. I, you know, I'm just trying to think, and I'm, and I'm just, I, I, you know, I say my facts, what I, what I feel I am.
Well, it's good, but we need direction, and we're not gonna get there without y'all's voicing your thoughts and kinda talking this through. I mean, this is, this is a huge transformative project, so, um, please don't pull back, and-
It very much is.
Yeah, so we need to kinda talk about where we wanna go.
I think, well, I think if, if we could fix those issues with the roundabout, we have a, just a hard-
I just don't see it working in, in the current way it is now.
But your issue is not believing that the, that the traffic can get off the beach and go westbound. Right?
I think that's the biggest issue for me, yes.
Yeah, it's the biggest issue.
But, but how, how can, if the analysis says it'll work, then how can we fit, I mean, you're saying fix something that's doesn't need to be fixed.
Well, two of the one thing, like on any point, I don't know if you can get the, the westbound traffic on ninety-eight that wants to go north, if you can zip them and keep them out of the roundabout, that'll eliminate some of that clutter that I, that I think he was talking about, that today they don't have, you know, and he's right, when you come off-
There's no pinch points.
Yeah, when you come off today, it's just water sailing. And then tomorrow, under this, it would not be unless we mitigate ways to get on the roundabout. It's kinda like you, it just reverses of the way people get on the beach, it's just you're saying you're getting off of ninety-eight going east without getting in the roundabout, we're saying get off ninety-eight going west without getting in the roundabout.
Would a diamond interchange work there, Mike, instead of a roundabout?
How far is a diamond interchange?
I don't think that would. We were talking about, um, I don't remember what it's called, to be honest with you, an interchange, but it's still signalized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Diamond, um, but those have signals, I mean,
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're stopping traffic, which is not ideal.
Absolutely.
No matter what you do.
So, we do like the ninety-eight flyover, because, I mean, having that be unimpeded is a daily issue. And so that's what I'm hearing from the mayor and council is, you don't want to just go back to the, the top design, you would like to express to FDOT, we like the ninety-eight flyover.
Right.
And then say to FDOT, you know, we're not all on the same page on, you know, how to get on and off the beach. Um, but we would like to prioritize a flyover for ninety-eight.
I think we're fine on how to get on the beach.
I wanna be in charge.
Just on the beach.
Getting on the beach is fine, flyover is fine, it's getting off the beach is the issue.
Okay.
And the beach, yeah, that's a, I had it earlier.
Okay.
You have conflicts added to getting off that you didn't have, which we don't currently have.
Okay.
We currently have no conflict to get off the beach, but we're gonna create some for the roundabout.
And, and it's partially simple.
Of course, if we do all this and we still don't believe a roundabout works, where does that put us? They work everywhere else. I don't know why they wouldn't work here.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. I think, I think they would, yeah. I think I slept through all my traffic studies when I was at school.
I think we're, we're pretty close on the goals until we get to that point, and I think everybody's in pretty much agreement. So what if we get it to there and then ask them to go back and refine that, that particular area there with our listening to the concerns here, and reapply, uh, that and see if, if that gets approved of the debate.
Okay.
That's good work, we just need to turn it up a little bit.
Okay.
I think it's good, basically.
Anything else from Mike and Brian?
I can go through the question a while ago.
How much?
So the, the overpasses are about one point five to two million per overpass, and again, that number is depending on architectural features and other stuff could get, you know, as high as you wanted it to be, but-
That's not counting property, right?
That's not counting property, that's the structure of that. Um, and the concept as the highway ninety-eight, the interchange as shown here is eighteen to twenty million is the cost for that.
The whole exchange itself?
Yeah. Demo existing, all, everything, redo it. That's based on DOT, um, numbers. So.
Would that be a DOT number, though?
Yes, it would be a D-.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, that's good.
Yeah, exactly. Kinda hurts my credibility that you wonder that.
I'm not even sure around six million.
Yes.
Who's to say hypothetically that if we all agreed in a perfect world, this was gonna be the greatest thing out there? And DOT gets it, and they, they do a study, and they'd look at it, and they'd say, we don't like it.
Well, we have been communicating with them, and again, this was at their invitation. And so they're not going to reject it carte blanche because they haven't done that thus far. There might be elements that they take, elements that they explain to us, they would have concerns, and this is gonna be a continuous dialogue back and forth. And so, tonight, again, what is about hearing y'all's start, thoughts, and what, what, you know, you like and what you don't like, it would, it, uh, if we can get to a, a design that the council feels, you know, unanimous about, then we would put that forth to FDOT, but again, tomorrow starts their, uh, independent study that is gonna take a year. There is going to be a lot of discussion back and forth. And, uh, so we didn't expect that we would, you know, get there tonight, but it has been very helpful, and you've definitely kind of narrowed down, we've, we've got a good idea of what your concerns are, it's getting off the beach and that, uh, we can share that with them, and we can continue to work with, um, Mike and Brian and their teams and see if there's, uh, you know, I, I'm sure there's always more than one way to do something, so we'll look at other alternatives. Uh, but they wouldn't just look at this, FDOT, and just say, we're not doing it, because the channels of communication have been very open, we have been very encouraged.
So are we good then? You just need a, we don't need to vote on that?
Oh, you've given us what we need, yes. Just presentation.
I think I understand too, from our standpoint too, if you, i- if the priority isn't to obtain a developable land, I mean, that's a big, big issue that can change the concept significantly. I mean, so if, if that's not y'all's wish or, or need, then that's something that could certainly change the concept significantly.
Well, I think-
If that's still the one, you know, like Samantha said, I think, I think this came together with the best of all three of the goals, which was to maintain functionality, come up with, you know, the green space or developable property, and be able to have a multimodal connection to national security.
The request for proposals kind of weighted them all the same. I mean, it just included all three of those things from your, um, master plan, and so in talking about these things, you definitely get a good idea of what you give and take, and all three of those being rigid priorities, and so that's another thing you've kind of let us know tonight, is what your chief concerns are, and then what you would, um, be willing to be more flexible on or lesser, lesser priority.
Now, regardless, what we would end up doing with the property, it would be to our advantage to create that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
Does that help then?
Well, I just think functionality should be first and foremost before profitability.
I agree.
On the property, it would be a nice benefit from that, but I don't wanna sacrifice the functionality over profitability as you potentially selling the park, you know, land. I think that should take preference first. And then, if there's a way to make that work functionality good, and we can still profitability from the property, then that's fine, but not to sacrifice one for the other.
Sure, and I think that makes sense, and I think by starting off seeing if we could accomplish all three was one thing, was a good thing to do, because that would be the ideal situation. Uh, but if that's not gonna work, you know, and, you know, and I think too, our priority has been the traffic and the mobility for things, then, you know, we can adjust this some, and, you know, that, that's where we need to go.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Okay.
All right, is that enough, Mike, or?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we got next steps, but, um, these are down the line, obviously. Um, after concepts are, are, you know, agreed upon, especially on the interchange, but, um, but we don't really need to go through them.
No, number one could take quite a while.
Yeah, obtain funding is a big kick, big kick.
We'll need a reminder for the rest of them.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Good explanations and good answers to questions. Okay.
I'll go ahead and let y'all, you don't want to, we won't think ill of you after.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you guys, thanks, Brian.
All right, next on our agenda, we've got the little of bids for school zone flashers, um, Samantha? School vote, is that Craig?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, this is a budgeted item for the CRA. Um, we put the project out the bid, we received one bid that came in under the budget, and what this is, is uh, on Shoreline and Daniel Drive, uh, under Florida state statutes, roads that the municipality is in charge of is required to do the school zone flashing signs. So, the ones that are currently out there, the flashers are broken, uh, the power source of them are broken, some of them were covered in, uh, trash bags, and so trying to correct that issue, um, this bid alternative did include the decorative poles, and so these will have a cloud management system that has school times change, we can go in and change them all at once, make sure they're flashing at the correct time, and throughout the three school cycles, and also is on a decorative pole that matches the CRA design guidelines, and so it is a budgeted item that, uh, this bid came in under budget, what we had.
Have we used this company before? I guess I would just kind of supply from one, one company.
We have had a difficult time with, uh, getting responsive bidders recently on a just number of projects. But Thomas would know, if we've used this company before, I can't say offhand.
Yeah, no, that's mine.
Yeah. But it has been.
So Shane, I, I, I see the sites you're pointing out and everything. Is there any existing site after you go through the red light there, and, um, you know, you're heading northbound or westbound on ninety-eight? Actually, is there another?
There's two sites on ninety-eight which, uh, would be controlled by FDOT, is that what you're referencing, on ninety-eight?
It seems like to me, when we stop at that red light and people leave that red light, there's a, there's a lot of acceleration, like, oh, we forgot, we're back in the school zone.
We add, uh, to our request, I believe they add one to the center median there, but as people are going, you know, going, traveling quick on ninety-eight, they're difficult to see, and I believe the ones on ninety-eight don't have flashers, they just have multiple times on their interchange.
So it's just like a-
It's not grabbing people's attention, correct?
Man, I was not in our jersey, I was just curious, because I noticed, you know, people seem to accelerate, they're, they've been on their phone, you know, it's another world by the time the light changes again, you know?
Correct, uh, and we added one to the, uh, at our request, I believe FDOT added one to the center median, but it just, it doesn't grab people's attention when they're going forty miles an hour.
I get you, okay.
All right, last thing, do we have any comments or questions from the public? All right, do we have a motion?
Go to the first.
Got a motion and a second, any questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro, same sign, passes five zero. Okay, great. All right, next we are headed for, are we adjourned the, is there any public forum for CRA? All right, we'll adjourn then CRA and reconvene as the- All right, we'll adjourn then CRA and reconvene as the city council meeting. All right, so now we're down to presentations, and the first one is for the financial, third quarter financial report. Samantha?
Thank you. Mayor and council, Finance Director Jane Griffin gave you a very detailed report. This is, you know, routine for this time of year, and you've talked about it quite in depth during your budget workshops, so I'm not going to belabor it too much, just to say that, of course, your non-adverberum taxes are about 13% below what they usually average this time of year, and we do believe that that is COVID-related. But of course, we anticipated that there would be some impact to revenues that had not yet been realized. We did not know to what extent. And so for that reason, we have, you know, deferred and projects and reduced our operational expenses. And so even though our revenues are down by 13%, our expenses are even lower. And so by the, you know, end of the year, we expect that will be around 85% of projected spending. What you see is a breakdown by fund, by our general operating fund, our special revenue funds, and your enterprise funds, that all say they're at or below, you know, 75%, which is the general benchmark for this time of year for overall spending. And so some are a little bit less, such as, you know, South Santa Rosa is at 65%, but generally, they're all around 75%. Natural gas, which also, I'll just point that one out, is at 68% of spending, so it's well below. But again, because of the impact of, you know, the COVID pandemic to the beach, we've really ratcheted down spending as well. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any particular questions, but more importantly, just this time of year, the council always receives your third quarter financial report.
Thank you.
Just a question. I guess with budget, I saw that the community center is down like 48%, and I'm sure it's because of not having summer camp and, you know, being able to rent out the building and facilities. Are they going to be okay for the rest of the year, you think, as far as their budget?
The rest of this fiscal year, the current year, that one? Yes, ma'am. And so we have reduced, you know, operational expenses accordingly. For instance, the revenues that we take in from summer camp, we have not hired those summer recreation assistants. And so, yes, we will not be over budget.
All right. And next year for as far as projections for them?
Next year, we have employees who we did not propose funding for next year. And so hopefully, we will get to phase three of our pandemic plan, and then we would bring back to you a revision to the schedule of authorized positions and hire the recreation assistants and those special event positions and the facility coordinator position back at that time. But, you know, those, those positions rely on the activities. And so unfortunately, with those activities severely restricted or suspended right now, then those positions are not authorized for next year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Any, anything from the public?
None.
All right. All right, a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, questions from the council? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. All right, now we'll move on to resolution number 41-2020, approving a plan of finance. Samantha?
Thank you. Mayor and council, resolution number 41-2020, if adopted, approves the plan of finance and amendment number 130 to the interlocal agreement between the city and the town of Century. These actions are necessary prior to the consideration of the final resolution by the CTA board. The CTA board did approve a preliminary resolution and recommends approval. The TEPER hearing was held this morning at 9:00 AM for this resolution for final adoption. And staff recommendation is that the council adopt resolution number 41-2020, approving a plan of finance for Discovery Education Holdings, which is a charter school facility, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $60 million in CTA education facility revenue bonds.
Okay. All right, Leslie? All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes five zero. Resolution number 42-2020. Samantha?
Thank you. Resolution number 42-2020, if adopted, approves the plan of finance and amendment number 129 to the interlocal agreement between the city and the town of Century. These actions are also necessary consideration to the final resolution by the CTA board. A preliminary resolution was approved by the CTA board, who recommends approval. The TEPER hearing was held this morning, and staff's recommendation is that the council adopt the resolution approving a plan of finance for South Tech School Holdings, a charter school facility, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $12,500,000 in Capital Trust Agency Educational Facilities Leash Revenue Bonds.
All right. Leslie?
None.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Aye, a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, the passes five zero. All right, next we are down to resolution number 43-2020. Samantha, Pineapple Cove?
Yes. Resolution, that just sounds like somewhere we all need to be, right? Very smart if you're going to get an education, name it somewhere fun. Pineapple Cove, yes. Resolution number 43-2020, if adopted, approves the plan of finance and amendment number 128 to the interlocal agreement between the city and the town of Century. These actions are necessary prior to consideration of the final resolution by the CTA board. The CTA board did approve a preliminary resolution and recommends approval. The TEPER hearing was held this morning, and staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution approving a plan of finance for Pineapple Cove Classical Academy at West Melbourne Incorporated, and authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $36 million in CTA educational facilities revenue bonds.
All right. Leslie?
None.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. Resolution number 44-2020.
Yes, staff would recommend that we table the site until your first regularly scheduled meeting in September.
Okay. All right, we will move on to resolution number 45-2020, and that is to extend amendment resolution 35-2020. As extended by prior resolutions, and declaring safe emergency to protect the map, measures related to COVID-19 and face coverings. Leslie?
I don't have any.
Okay. Council?
Move for approval, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions from-
Do we have any updates on the cases, any instances?
We do. Currently, there are 19 positive cases. And just to explain for the public who may be listening, the report that I get to city council, when I'm speaking of positive cases, it would be a case that the Department of Health has reported to our dispatch center, so that would represent one residence. Of course, there may be more than one individual per resident who is positive, and so that is a conservative number of 19. We have had a, a peak period of, of being more in the mid twenties, around 27 positive cases. And these do all represent community spread.
So we feel like the masks are helping?
I, definitely the number is going in a positive direction.
I thought, I thought 20 was the benchmark we were looking forward to, not move forward with masks. Wasn't that the number we talked about?
I, I don't remember that we set a number. I thought we were just going to watch each week and then look at trend. That's the way I remember it. Somebody can correct me.
Wow.
I don't recall setting a set number.
Okay, I thought we talked about that, sorry.
I, I will say-
You asked about that, and we could figure one out if I recall, Jamie.
Definitely, we're happy with the numbers, that they are not going up, and we hope that that, you know, stays a trend, certainly as areas, you know, around us continue to be heavily impacted. So that may be something that the council wants to consider if the trend continues to hold or, or decrease as it is.
You know, I, I just, you know, I go through the city and people wear masks, people wear halfway mask, people got them, you know, I walk through the Walmart, you know, of course, I had to put a mask on. Half the staff have them below their nose as they're walking around, you know. I just don't feel, feel like they're working. I mean, I sent some information out, hopefully Sam shared some of that. I just don't really feel like they're working. I just think it's just-
That was an interesting video.
Yeah. You know, I just, you know, I, so I, I'm still going to be against it, but I just curious how it's washing out.
I kind of agree with DJV on that. You've seen masks that are ineffective, and I think we got something from Todd that indicated some masks that were good and some that are very ineffective. And, you know, the ones with the vents, most masks were designed to protect you from the inhalant that you're working around, not so much what you're exhaling to other people. And the ones with the vents or filters, they all bypassed it, just dumped it right back out, even the ones that supposedly do well or not, you know. So I have to agree. I mean, I think it should be up to the individuals as opposed to-
Yeah, I don't have an issue with, you know, individuals.
I don't have an issue with it either.
Okay.
All right. And I do think, I have read too, I do think there is a difference that if you have a double-fold mask, it's definitely more helpful than if you have a single pole or, you know, single liner.
You see that?
Yeah. But I, I just thought that was interesting too, about, because I've seen people wearing the one that they blow out of, you know, and so I thought that was an interesting thing around, maybe. Okay, so any other comments, questions?
I do just want to state for the record that Councilman Schluter provided a copy of the video to myself and to the city clerk, and that it was shared individually with each council person. Just that if anybody wants to see the video that you're referencing, the city clerk has it.
Okay. All right, thank you. What about your information, Todd? Did everybody get it?
Yes, thank you for, yes, covering it. Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, and this would be to just follow the same resolution timeframe we've been following?
Correct.
Okay, consent agenda items. We will call to that now. Is there any item that the council would like to remove from consent? All right, hearing none. Alyssa, do we have any contacts from the public?
No, ma'am.
All right, do we have a motion?
Echo Bravo Charlie. You told me.
Well, that was okay. That's a hard day.
Echo, I said Echo.
I said Echo.
We're in training.
We're in training, yeah.
We're going to get called on those kids' cards.
I'll second.
Move for approval, consent agenda items, Alpha Bravo Charlie.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All, any discuss, oh, we have a discussion. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, action item. We are moving on to the lift station pump replacements. Samantha?
Thank you. Mayor and council, this is a budgeted item. You have approved another batch of pump replacements for lift stations. It is considered to be a life safety issue to ensure that we are purchasing pumps for a six-point safety process. And so staff would recommend that the council authorize the purchase of pumps for Coronado Court, 11T, Walmart Woodlawn 1, 2, 3, Melissa Court, Stanford Whisper Bay 7, Santa Clara and Eventide wastewater lift stations, in the total amount of $165,319.10 from Morrow Water Technologies Incorporated. And again, under the financial impact, you see there that this is a budgeted expense.
Basically, it's about the same every year, because they said, I have no idea we have that many lift stations. That's a lot.
Yes. It is, it is not the same every year, but this, it was a, made a priority last year. And, and so it is a bit of a catch-up.
Okay. All right. Leslie, any questions from the public? All right, do we have a motion?
Move for approval, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussions?
Quick question, if I could.
Sure.
Anne, Samantha?
Yes.
On the, I may be just having a hard time understanding, "The staff solicited quotes from vendors appropriate for each pump's particular design. Sole source purchasing is necessary in order to avoid redesigning each lift station to accommodate new makes and models." When you, when you mean by sole source, is that just this particular brand that you went with to go back in the existing spot?
Correct. And so that-
Being vendors bidding on it?
Right. So our, each lift station, you know, was designed for a particular capacity, and it's from a particular brand. And so you want to make sure that that pump-
Right.
And then also for the warranty.
No, I understand. But we did, we did solicit quotes-
Yes.
Other than just one individual. It wasn't one sole.
That's correct. In the event that there was more than one person, or I'm sorry, one company, but in most instances, you're, it's kind of like you have a Xerox copier, and only Xerox sells that particular toner. And so in most instances, with these pumps, the lift station manufacturer is the only one who is going to provide that particular type of pump. And so that, that's the reason for the sole source. Yes.
And that is a procedure that is allowed under the purchasing policies. And there are, there's documentation that, that the sole source is warranted, that has to be provided, and it's made part of the, the bid bond.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes five zero. All right, our next action item is public services office expansion. Samantha?
Thank you. Council, this is a budgeted item within your capital improvement plan. There is no financial impact at this time. It's just authorization for advertising to bid. This is for the design of the renovation and enclosing of the public service open bays. Not this budget year, but last year, we showed some pictures, and the steel structure was unsafe. I mean, very bad. And so as I shared earlier, right now, we're having a hard time getting responsive bids. And so we're hoping that we see some here. This may be one of those that we have to bid out several times. We don't know, but it will be next fiscal year before you see a financial impact.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Leslie?
None.
All right.
Move for approval, second.
We've done a motion and a second. Questions? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next on our agenda is item C, which is authorized to popularization to the FY 2020 group, G resurfacing pigment. Samantha?
Yes. Mayor and council, the reason why this is on your agenda is because we're requesting, and have conferred with Mary Jane to make sure that we could make this request. But we're requesting your authorization for a two-week invitation to bid instead of the typical 30 days. The reason, of course, is because we have, we're already proceeding with dispatch of resurfacing projects, but this is for the paved markings, and Hoffman Drive came in higher than what we had anticipated. So the only thing that we're asking for is that we bid it over, you know, two weeks instead of the 30 days.
All right, Leslie?
No, ma'am, we do not have any comments.
All right.
And just, if I could just add to that, the 30-day requirement is for any projects that are over $25,000. So this did fall below that, however, or the estimate is. But again, the estimate was above five, which was what was, the only, the only reason for that is because of all the markings that have to be done on Hoffman Drive. Typically, it wouldn't have even been above five, in which case we would have just done, just the solicitation of quotes. So it does have to be bid, but because it's under $25,000 estimated, it can be done with the bid just being advertised for the short period.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Can we?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. We've got a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, passes five zero. All right, down to action item B, purchase of a 2020 Ford Ranger pickup truck.
What about D? What about D? D.
Whoops, sorry.
Shoreline Drive resurfacing?
Oh, okay, the Shoreline Drive resurfacing shots. I'm sorry. Okay, Samantha?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff is requesting the council approve additional engineering services fees proposed by McKinnon Creed to create bid documents for the Shoreline Drive resurfacing project. This is in support of council's action after last meeting that we moved forward with expediting this project. Moving this forward now, along with your resurfacing, ultimately, we think will save money, if we have to move it all at the same time.
Okay.
Leslie, do we have any comments?
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
All right. Motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
It wasn't included in the multi-use pad? When he did that, or no?
No.
It wasn't.
No? Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, pass is five zero. And now, we're down to the purchase of the twenty-twenty Ford Ranger pickup truck, item B.
Sorry, how'd you get there? Staff request that the council approve the purchase of the twenty-twenty Ford Ranger for twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents to be reimbursed by the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas or HITE Task Force. The expenditure is coming out of the Chief's Discretionary Assets and Portraits Fund, and so there is no budget impact to our general fund.
Okay. All right, Leslie?
No, ma'am, I want to speak to the-
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval, second.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion in the second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, discussion items. We're down to the Tourism Development Advisory Committee proposed twenty-twenty fiscal year twenty-twenty budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Tourism Development Advisory Council did meet and discuss their current budget. Of course, that is, this year, we curtailed most of the spending. We're at fifty-nine percent expenditures, and that is certainly because of the unknown with the COVID pandemic. And so likewise, because for next year, it represents a conservative budget carrying forward the deferred projects and programs for this year. Aside, for this year, aside from the annual Arts Fest, which the advertising promotion had already occurred at the time that the governor declared the state of emergency, and so that expense had already been paid, the remaining special events, including, you know, Spring Fest, was suspended, along with the funding for the splash pad. The portions of the budget which were expended this year were in support of maintaining our boat ramp and tourist-oriented parks, which have continued to see use. And so, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget, what you see is a carryforward on page one sixty-six, and the total amount of spending would be projected at two hundred, just, I mean, just under two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You see that last year's proposed budget, I say last year, because it's the current year we're in, was at two hundred and sixty thousand. And so, it's a, we're proposing a spending plan that is different by forty thousand dollars. That is based on the revenue that we are projecting to receive, but just like this year, we're not going to put forth a project or spend in a discretionary way until we receive those monies, and we do receive those monies four months in the arrears for next year. And so, it will be, yes, it will be, we'll continue to keep our TDAC informed, and as we receive those funds, they may consider moving forward, you know, with one of their projects or tourist-oriented programs, but it is a little early to say, and for that reason, this is one of our smaller funds, and it doesn't require any action tonight. We're going to just incorporate it into your budget documents, but wanted to update you on their recent budget workshop.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Leslie, do we have any comments? No, ma'am, I want to speak to the-
All right. And new business, Mary Jane, I think you have some new business to talk about.
Yes, it's actually a report on old business, but I wanted to update you on the sale of forty-five acres of Title Point Golf Course to the school board. The due diligence period, which the school board did under the contract, extend for a period of time, but it did expire on August seventh, and so we are now in the process of finalizing documents, just working with title company to make sure everything is good with the issuance of the title policy. And under the contract, the closing is to take place within thirty days of the closing of the due diligence period. We are hoping we will make that deadline, although it's September seventh, which is Labor Day, so it cuts us short a few days, just logistically. And what we've been told by the school board's attorney is that the superintendent is willing to sign an addendum that would just give us, you know, a few extra days, a week, or whatever we need, and I don't anticipate it would be a lengthy extension if we do need it, and it would be just, you know, a standard kind of extension of the contract, no substantive change, and I just wanted to report that to you, as we would need to have the mayor also sign for the city agreement, just to extend it, so that we can finalize all of the title work and the documents for proceeding on to closing.
Okay. I don't, we don't need to vote on that.
I just wanted to be sure. I brought it to you, just to see if anyone had any objections, you could raise them.
We need to extend.
But I think it's a ministerial, again, it's not a substantive change to the contract. It's just logistically giving us a little more time if we need it, and we're gonna work hard to see if we can get the closing done before December, so.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. All right. Any additional new business? Public forum, question?
No, ma'am, I haven't seen any comments by email or phone or chat.
All right. Council comments? Randy?
First.
Yeah.
Any more bites on golf course?
I have not spoken with DeeDee today, but last week, you know, she had talked about the fact that we have had over twenty interested parties, but each of them have expressed that they can't, they just can't make the numbers work, understanding that they would be in the same position that the city has been in, unless there could be some consideration of a small portion of the west course, and by small, I mean plus or minus five acres. And, you know, my thought is that that is pretty de minimis, that it wouldn't require formal action of the council and a relisting if we're talking about plus or minus five acres, but it would help you to understand what these potential buyers would like to do, and, you know, and where they want those five acres to be. And so, I asked her to go back and speak with each individual buyer, and tell them that we, you know, the mayor and council would be, you know, interested in hearing that. She has been working with Ron on what would make most sense, what would be contiguous to the east course. Would that be an amenity that might help, you know, make Tiger Point more profitable? And so, is that a tennis court? Is that a pool? Would that be a, you know, a hotel, or some type of commercial aspect? She brainstormed with me and just told me that she would give back with some more information. So as of right now, I know she's working with staff to kind of figure, carve out plus or minus, you know, five acres, and then bring you more information. So I felt like it was really hard. I didn't wanna come and just say, would you authorize five acres, without giving you more of a picture of what it is exactly that they're talking about. So please expect that update pretty soon, and I just unfortunately didn't get a chance to circle back with her today.
Would that be for potentially additional type of use for the property, as opposed to golf course, or?
I think what DeeDee Davis, who I'm referring to, NAI Pensacola, your broker of record, what she expressed to me is that potential buyers were looking at it as an additional amenity in some way, whether that be a commercial aspect or another recreational aspect, they were still looking at it as a way to kind of revamp and recharge Tiger Point, so something that would be a further attraction.
Something that is more marketable.
Yes.
Profitable, too.
Yes. Now, in addition to that, and I'm glad, Councilman, that you brought this up, because certainly the council needed an update, the South Santa Rosa Utility Board had on their agenda the consideration of selling surplus lands. Now that you have entered into a memorandum of agreement with Highland Bar Water Systems in Santa Rosa County, there has been some light interest expressed on some of your spray fields further down the highway, and also, the South Santa Rosa Utility Board and the mayor and council have just not discussed the west course, you just, other than replacing the irrigation. And so, not to say that it, you would be interested or not, but it just has not been discussed. And so, we were gonna talk about all three of those parcels, and whether you would be interested in listing some of that in order to provide cash for the capital improvements that you have listed in your utility plan, but the South Santa Rosa Utility Board did not have a quorum. And so, because they did not have a quorum, we didn't want to discuss it without a full body present, and that's why it's not on your agenda, but we'll have that bigger conversation about the west course and the entire forty-five acres, in addition to what we call ERS sites one and three, once the SSRU board meets, and we're now trying to work on a special meeting time.
Okay, thank you.
That was more than you expected.
Sorry, guys.
It was one of those, well, sent you fast.
Yeah, I think we're looking at week from nine, August twenty-fourth, I believe, this one, for sure.
About five thirty.
Okay, very good.
About five thirty. We couldn't make those date. Everybody on the board has day jobs, they couldn't leave them, so. We had to reschedule.
JB?
Well, of course, Thursday came with, a lot of us were rerunning, you know, we're back on council, you know, I guess I'm running, I oppose, so that's always good. But, you know, I served a lot of council. This is a great council. I'm excited. Served another four years with you guys. I think you need a lot of great things done. Hindsight reading the audit, I just have to say that, you know, I think sometimes it's easy to, you know, hindsight, or playing armchair quarterback, and say, well, we should have done this, and we should have done this, you know. I was in the throes of some of that stuff when we did it. At the time, would I have voted different? Probably not, you know, but I think our city manager at the time did a great job. I think he took a lot of heat for things that, you know, you're just trying to, sometimes just put out fires. I mean, I remember a lot of times during the storms and this and that, and working fourteen, eighteen-hour days, and this and that, so I had to hate that he kind of got a black eye in some of that, you know, and it's just part of it. So I just want, it'll be said, that I think Buzz did a great job during that time, and we can always make improvements, and I think this gave us an opportunity to look at some improvements we can make, but I think sometimes, in the throes of things, you just do things to try to get things, keep things moving, you know, so I think a lot of it was that. To me, I've read a lot of reports, a lot of, I just wanted to let you say it from the record.
I think that's a good point. You know, we always have a small staff here, since that involved us, a tiny city staff.
Yeah.
And there's always a lot going on, especially in the four times. It's okay. JB, Tom?
Just the same thing, happy to be here for another four years, and bad things turned out to what they did, and really was not looking forward to campaigning and knocking on doors during the pandemic and things like that, so I'm glad it worked out the way it did, and glad the committee showed the confidence in us to put on the road, so look forward to more work, and getting paid again.
You send a, you will get your two dollars.
Oh, my gosh. Save that money.
I spent forty dollars on mine, man. I spent four cents on mine for rerunning.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I never checked that small before.
I know, I had to think about how to write it.
I probably wrote it wrong.
Uh, Tom?
Okay. I just want to say congratulations to the three of you that have been on that front of the council. That means that you either made it look like a really, look like things do, or you're really pleased with what you're doing. Either way, I appreciate serving with all of you, and I think the city's got a lot of good days ahead because of the, I think your comments around the audit were dead on. I think the people that were in their slots at the time did the very best they could out of the city's interest, and that's not just the administration, but it was the mayor and the council at the time as well, so when I look back at it, you know, I see people just trying to do the city of golf, please, right, and the nice thing is that going forward, we've made a lot of changes that have precluded those kind of issues going forward, so I appreciate what Sam and Kim have done as well, so that's what I, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, I feel the same, you know, I just think that we've got such a good group here, and that we've got so many things like irons in the fire that are big projects that can really affect all threes, and I, we have, you know, different opinions about things and different thoughts about things, and I think that's helpful for, you know, for our organization, and also, it brings us together, in my opinion, as a team, too, because